Please stand. Please, please, just a moment of silence, Tim. Would you please leave us?
Please, please, to certify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you may be seated. Thank you, ma'am. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
No, we approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay. A motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have rapid mission. Detective Phil, the HSL.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Coach Burke if she'd come up. I think, I asked Mr. Smith to let her know that she'd need to say a few words, but if she'll come up here to the podium, I'm not sure Mr. Smith got my message relayed to her.
I didn't get that email.
But I believe you had an individual state champion?
I do, Ms. Sarah McPherson. You can come on up. Oh, okay. All right. I'll just say a few things about Sarah. I have had the pleasure to be able to teach Sarah in the classroom since she was in middle school and then, and then still be able to, you know, be involved with her sports, whether it was basketball, volleyball, track, and I can just say she has always been an exceptional student in the classroom, outside of the classroom, and an awesome athlete, just all around. And she works at everything she does to 110%. And so proud of her. Now, she's all grown up and getting ready to go out in the real world, but congratulations. This is awesome. And so, so proud of you. We all are.
And I think it's important to note every time, especially Thomas Walker, they don't have a track.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's a track team, but they don't have a track. And, you know, they go and compete against these teams that do, and we're just so proud of them and her and what they do and the coaches and everybody down there.
Yes.
Just remind everybody what a beach you want?
I want a high jump, high jump five-two.
Yeah, she's like, no.
Have you run track up from high school?
No, I just started last year.
Yeah, I know, man.
Yeah, that's the funny thing. Somebody, she responded in D-class.
But if you've ever had a chance to watch her in basketball or volleyball, she's a natural athlete. I mean, and she is, so, I mean. But we're very proud of her and very proud of the way she represented Lee County to the county public.
Congratulations. She's proud of us.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next up, public comment. Thirty-one, public comment. All right, just make sure that you do not mention anyone's name unless you're doing so to introduce them.
Good afternoon, my name is Susan Baker-Bush. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about a kids' program that our church has been participating since May the 27th. It's Feeding Southwest Virginia. And the reason I'm here tonight is we're only a small group of people at Mount Carmel Baptist Church, and we, the first Monday, we fed sixty kids. The next Monday, we had eighty-seven children. The third Monday, we had eighty-eight. So, we're only feeding a small portion of Lee County. My heart's desire, and I believe that we could reach out to all across the county. I think if I, I have a bus license, if I could take a bus and maybe go to Sticklville Community at a certain time, Blackwater Community at a certain time, start down at Elydale, and maybe go to each school, and just be there for an hour, I think that we could distribute a lot of these food boxes. They are five-day boxes. And how do I need the school board's help? Well, I'd have to get approval to use a bus. I know we're tied on budget that I would need fuel for the bus. And Mount Carmel Church is willing to be that sponsor to back it, that I would, could go out into the public and do that for the kids. I think we have a lot of kids in our school system that go hungry in summer, they don't get all the meals that they need, and with these five-day boxes, that make help a child get through the week. And we have about eight more weeks that we could, that's eight boxes, that's a lot of food for these kids of Lee County. I'm currently working with maybe, talking to Sticklville Community, okay, who can meet me there and just get the bags in, get the boxes. I get a piece of paper filled out, it just takes a minute, all the parent's name has to fill out. It's just as simple, their name, their address, a phone number that I can contact them in case something comes back in these food boxes as a recall, that I could contact the person, and how many children are in the home. That's all the simple information I need. And if we are allowed to do this, Feeding Southwest Virginia sadly sent me an email, and they said, well, we're just kind of getting started with all these things, and we don't know that we can support you in going around all these schools. So, what I need the board to do, with you already having contact with Todd Killian, Mr. Greckle, and Mr. Hynden, I don't know if you could contact them and say, hey, are people willing to help our kids in Lee County feed them through this Feeding Southwest Virginia? Would they be willing to, uh, Feeding the Southwest Virginia program to allow us to do this, allow the food to come in Lee County? We probably get 500 boxes of food a month, and that goes out to kids months a week, that's a lot of food. So, I'm asking for your assistance in this matter. Again, I kind of just put a little brief together, like on Monday, we, this coming Monday, and I thank Rick with the public news for running the article for us in this week's paper, this coming Monday from ten until twelve, we'll pass out these boxes at the church, and it's kind of like a drive-through. They just come through, how many, I look at their name on the list if they've already been there, if not, they fill out a sheet. We give them four boxes for the four kids in the home. Like if I can go to Sticklville and Blackwater on Mondays, that afternoon, and hand out those boxes Tuesday, maybe catch Elydale, Thomas Walker, Rose Hill, Flat, Winston-Dos Middle, then on Wednesday, maybe catch St. Charles, Pink Mill, and Lee High School. So, I pray that she'll just be in, wanting to pardon with us in this situation. I have had to go through training, and as I, as our volunteers at church, I have to train them in proper civil rights, how to treat people, what we should and should not do. And I just feel this is a program that we could expand on, and, you know, they're allowing Cobra and schools to do this program and deliver foods into their communities. I think Lee County could do the same. Thank you for your time in this matter, and I hope that you'll consider helping the kids in Lee County feed them this summer.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comment? The board comments?
I want to congratulate Sarah Pearson again for winning state. I want to congratulate the Lee High girls' track team for winning state. So, especially with Lee High, we've won tennis and girls' track this year. For that, we'd only won tennis in ninety-one, so things are moving along in the right direction for Lee High's sports, and I'm really proud of all of them. I did want to bring up one thing, it's been sort of an issue of teaching in the county here recently, and it involves the school board budget. And I think there's been a lot of misinformation put out there, and it's really a pretty simple concept that is in the written law and in Virginia Department of Education policies. It's not a thing that the Lee County School Board sends a piece of paper to Richmond and says, we want forty-two million dollars for our budget this year. They don't do that. They tell us how much they're going to give us. And the way they do that is they have a formant, it's called the composite index, and there's three parts to that composite index. The first part is that they look at the true value of real estate in Lee County, and they take, they weight that fifty percent of the formant. But next, they take the adjusted gross income, and I assume they take it from your income tax return of each individual, and they, they weight that forty percent. And the last part is the taxable retail sales of Lee County, and that's ten percent of the weighted percent of the formant, so that gives you a hundred percent. And so, the State Department of Education will adjust these figures annually so that the state provides fifty-five percent of the funding and the county provides forty-five percent of the funding. The county's part of the funding is called the required local effort, and that's what the county is mandated to give to the school system. They don't have a choice. They can like it or not like it. I have empty for the board supervisors, because they've been put in a horrible spot. So, I would ask no one to cast aspersions on those gentlemen, because they're just going to have to do what they have to do, and that's going to be raise taxes. Now, part of that issue is that they are having to fund Lee County Public Schools quite a bit more this year than they did last year. That's because of new raises for employees or whatever. We have about seven hundred employees. The state doesn't fund all those, they only fund the standard of quality issue employees. So, we have to pick up most of that ourselves, and the county obviously has to contribute to that. You know, those people go out and buy groceries, and they go to Walmart, Food City, and Grable's, and they go to Hardee's and McDonald's, and they spend that money when they make more money. So, it's not just a zero-sum game. You get taxed, but you get no benefit from it. Of course, you get benefit from it. I'd say it's a horrible situation for the gentleman on the school board to be put on. I hate it for him, but it is what it is. And the fact of the matter is, with the rumors floating around, well, we just won't pass a budget, we'll pass a budget, not fund the school system. I don't think you're going to go tell seven hundred employees you're not going to get a paycheck in July. Trial that one, that's real good policies. The other thing is, 2241-97 of Code Virginia says that if they don't do it, to meet the required local efforts, that the Attorney General's office will file writ of mandamus in the local circuit court, and they will force the school system to do it. The judge is not going to say, we're going to blow up the Virginia funding forum because Lee County doesn't like it. So, that's where we are. It's a horrible situation. It's going to get passed one way or the other, or it's going to be mandated by, by circuit court judge. And we all need to do our best with it, and, and it'll all work out. We'll all be okay. So, I quit praying now.
Well, thank you, Rob. That's a very good explanation of it, and, you know, the thing of it is, it's nothing that we're out here just spending money right and live. We have been very conservative, and, you know, I just, I hate it for the situation they're in, but on the other hand, there's not anything the school board and school system can do at this point in time. Anyone else have?
I just want to say another thing is that, you know, we don't have a lot of discretionary funding in our budget. About eighty-one percent or eighty-two percent goes to salaries and benefits of employees. We get some federal money, most of that's tied up in some program, another heads for instance. Other things are mandated. We did get a lot of money, we really did, over the last couple of years on COVID money. That, once again, doesn't come without strings attached. You have to get approval for certain expenditures, ask them before you do a project, and get permission to do that. And so, it's not just like that's just free money to use any way you want to. You have to use it within the parameters of the programs that they're, that they're requesting or requiring. And so, we still have some of that COVID money, thank goodness, because we've still got some roofs to fix and things like that, but the money's all been well-spent. And one of the things that we talked about with the track coach last night, she said, you don't realize how much it meant to these girls for you all to get them a new track. She goes, that's where it started. She said, they were inspired to have a nice facility, and she said, I really think it made a difference in our season. You were there too. So, anyway, now I'm going to shut it, I promise.
Well, I agree with Mr. Heinz. It's, it's not our fault. Mr. Dean and Ms. Belcher worked tirelessly to take care of our funding and make sure the money's put where needed, and, you know, the board supervisors are going to have to realize that they're responsible for to take care of our school system and our kids.
Anyone else, Tim?
Yeah, I want to say congratulations, Sarah. Very proud of you. You have set the bar, literally, high. And we are going to miss you around Thomas Walker, but you have, you've set, you've set the bar for those that are coming behind you, and I wish you nothing but the best in your, in your future endeavors. Mr. Heinz, thank you for clarifying that, because there are a lot of nasty rumors that, you know, start, and then it just builds and builds and builds, and, you know, from my time on the, serving on the board, I've seen that Mr. Dean, Ms. Belcher, and, and the school board has been very thorough and very cautious of how we spend our money to make sure that it's going to the right places, and, and, and we do, we employ a lot of people. Eighty-one, eighty-two percent of the budget goes to salaries, and, you know, we, we need to take care of those people, and very yet, we need to continue to be able to take care of our students in Lee County, so all of them. So, so thank you for that.
Chair, you give your thing?
I'll go say it all.
Okay. Under the, next up is the consent agenda. Item six, A, approval of minutes from the May ninth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting, B, approval of claims of expenditures, C, approval of twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five federal grant applications, D, approval of division literacy plan, E, approval of field trips, LHS Jackie Keltman, Cindy Garrett Senior Trip, twenty-twenty-five Orlando, Florida, December seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, F, approval of disposal of surplus property for school board policy, D, N, disposal of surplus items, G, approval of VSPA updates to school board policy, H, approval of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five VHSL membership applications for Lee High and Thomas Walker High, I, approval of twenty-twenty-four VPSA technology reimbursement resolution, J, approval of authorization for the division superintendent to fill vacancies existing or occurring between June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four through July the eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. This is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Tell them.
I'll say it.
Okay. Got a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven, reports of the board. Sure. If anyone needs, wants to get up and leave the meeting, you may do so now. If you want to stay and listen, it's up to you, too. Reports of the division superintendents.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, Pincup Times News, right on, in your packet, we've got students from all three middle schools. Encourage you to take a chance, look at those, you know, talk about how kids have grown this year. It's funny how some of them said they got smarter, some of them got taller, but if you get a chance, read that, because we like to encourage those kids to do that and get published. Enrollment, we finished the school year with two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six. So, that was down a little bit from the end of April. We were at two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five at the end of April, when we finished at two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six. So, that was above the budgeted number of two thousand seven hundred and ten. In your packet, you've got the Head Start update from Ms. Baker. Head Start, if you've got any questions on that, I'll try to answer those. We also have, give you a little budget update, I think Mr. Heinz said a lot, but I want to thank the board members who went with Ms. Belcher and I to the board of supervisors meetings twice. They had invited us to come, and we, you know, we talked. We're, like Mr. Heinz said, we're just asking for the required local effort or the required local match, depending on the program and how they word that. We're not asking for anything above those. You know, the state is funding at least a three percent average increase this year, so we're looking at doing that, and we'll talk about that just in a little bit with an action item. But we have all the budgeted information that we want to talk about here in a little bit, and today, I want to thank Ms. Belcher, we got the count tool for the end of this year, which we'll talk about it just in a few minutes, but nobody likes paying any more on taxes, but, you know, I'm hired to do what's best for the school division, and, you know, it's, it's not always a pleasant conversation when you're asking for money, and what we found out today with the calculation tool, I just gave you all the enrollment, we finished this year with a higher number than we budgeted, so when we ran the numbers today, I sent Mr. Poe a message and told him that to meet the required local effort and required local match for this year, there will be some more money requested from the locality, approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I gave him that heads up today. I mentioned it at, I think both of the board meetings that Ms. Garrett, Ms. Ely, and Mr. Parnador were at, that, you know, our enrollment was running higher, and that's the first time been, I couldn't tell you, we, that our enrollment went in the right direction, which is up, but just wanted to give you a quick update on that. You also have operations and transportation update in your packet. If you have any questions on those, I'll be more than glad to answer those as well.
Okay. Mine unfinished business, A, school district lines.
Madam Chair, as you know, the last two meetings, I mean, there's just two meetings ago about possibility of changes in bus routes, including right-hand, left-hand, Fort Valley above Lee High School here, and taking those elementary school students to St. Charles instead of where they go now, which is Dryden. I got you all the information on the students and shared that with you last month, and just put that on there to see if that's something you all wanted to do, or if you wanted to, if you don't take any action, the bus routes will stay the way they are. So, that's why we continue to put that on there as unfinished business for this month.
How many kids did you say that were on game by pre-teen?
I believe it's seven.
So, it's seven from Dryden that would go to St. Charles.
I will tell you that St. Charles has, they, they've reported that they have twenty-four registered for kindergarten, which is a pretty good number. Some of those children have been at Dryden for a few years, so they would be changing schools if you all do this.
Have there been communication with parents that they know about this, or is this going to be, if we make a decision, then you can?
We, we have put it on the agenda, we have talked about it, we have not talked to the parents, because we're just, you know, unless the action is taken, there will not be a They could continue to go to Dryden, but we would not be providing the transportation at that time. It would just be a bus route to, to St. Charles. It is just saying, like I said, St. Charles says that their kindergarten numbers will be up, twenty-four is what they have registered so far, which is a good number for St. Charles. So, just wanted to put that back on there, since no action has been taken yet.
What grade level are these students? Well, I mean, the primary, but do you know the actual grades?
I want to say two kindergarten, one first, and then a second, and then third and fourth. So, some of these children have been at Dryden for a number of years. It's just a thought, I mean, if you don't take any action, both schools are ready to go either way. So, we would just help them by seven.
Is, is Dryden overloaded?
No.
Is, is that the twenty-four enrollment for kindergarten?
It does include those.
What is, what does that compare to last year?
Uh, just, oh, hard. They have fifteen in kindergarten this year.
So, that's, I mean?
So, they're up nine from what they, what they had kindergarten this year. So, they've, they're losing twenty-two to the middle school, but they'll have a plus, plus positive of two as of right now, so their enrollment is going up a little.
So, then, even if those seven students don't go to St. Charles, we still going to have to have two kindergarten teachers?
At St. Charles?
Yeah.
If that number stays at twenty-four, yes.
Okay. So, it's going to be very small class, it's not bad.
Correct. We have not added a kindergarten teacher at St. Charles because people, enrollment changes at this time of the year, and some people will say they're coming to one school, and then when school starts, they go to a different school. So, we typically do not hire a teacher based on projections, and we wait to see if all twenty-four of them do show up, and we would probably have to get a teacher at Virginia School. But, you know, if they don't all show up, you could have up to twenty-one, I believe, at St. Charles in a class.
Well, one positive is that St. Charles got awarded being one of the top schools.
Correct.
So, I mean, it might be, the kindergarten, it wouldn't make much difference. I think just the first, third, fourth, you see, that's, that's not.
But, you know, we were just looking at, because the, the numbers that St. Charles has fallen below a hundred, and we were just trying to look at ways we could possibly improve the enrollment up there.
None of the parents disagree, they have to take them to dry.
If we do this, they would have to provide transportation. Or if this is something you all will consider, we can look at it again next year and just get the conversation started and let people know that we are looking at doing it in the future.
I think that'd be a good idea. I think it's great if I might.
Yeah.
I hear that. See, see what number, if it's increased by that number this year, kindergarten enrollment, typically trends happen, so maybe, hopefully, there's a boost in population in St. Charles.
So, how are you going to, how are you going to get the word out?
Well, if we don't take any action, there will be a change.
But I mean, if you want to revisit it next year?
We would do like we did this year, but we'll start talking about it, you know, before school is out, so people see that we're going to discuss it, and we can get the word out. And that's why I wanted to do it April, May, June, instead of, you know, right before school, that way people would have time to plan. So, but we can definitely bring it back up again next year.
I think that would be best, since they're going to have a, up in numbers in the kindergarten and agriculture.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm not opposed, I mean, that.
What, what is your recommendation as, as, as in, now that we have enrollment?
I mean, I'm glad to see the numbers go up at St. Charles. I'd like to see them, you know, above a hundred, because, you know, you won't be able to justify the money you're putting into a school. I, I know that the parents of the children that have been to Dryden for a number of years will not be happy, because they have been to those schools for two, three, four years, and, you know, that's what they're used to, and nobody likes change. I don't think it's a bad idea to wait and look at it again next year, since the positive, we're at a net positive right now.
Is this right in left-hand Fort Valley?
Correct.
Actually, they're a little closer to St. Charles?
That's why we looked at those, because it would be easy to change the bus route and get them up to St. Charles without causing a lot of issues, and, and travel time would not be any more than what it is now toward Dryden.
Okay, so, we just agree this, revisit it next year? Is it okay with you?
It's fine, yeah.
Okay, under action discussion, A, if any, action fini to authorize the division superintendent to make necessary transfers between categories and to recon- reconcile all the line items within the categories and to make necessary transfers between all funds to close out fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Madam Chair, this is just something we ask for every year as we close out the books from one year to the next, in case there's any change, I just ask for permission to do that, to close out the books and finish out FY twenty-four schedule. I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made, you have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, if any to approve renewal of current related services contract to Allied Constructional Services.
Madam Chair, we have a recommendation to renew that, that they provide us some related services, and we've had a good working relationship with them, so the recommendation is to renew that contract.
There are motion.
There are motion.
Okay, second? All right, we've got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, action fini to approve renewal of current related services contract to the Stepping Stones Group for School Psychology Services, originally awarded on May the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two for RFP twenty-two dash one oh oh one.
Madam Chair, this is also a renewal of a contract. This contract had a renewal option, and we've had a good working relationship with them. I believe the, the rate stayed the same with this one, so we're asking that we renew that contract as well.
There are motion. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item D, if any to award a contract related to RFP number twenty-five dash one zero zero two, liquid propane to lead propane.
Madam Chair, we had two bids on, on the liquid propane, Suburban Propane and Lead Propane. Suburban Propane, we're not sure exactly what time their bid got here, but So Suburban Propane, we're not sure exactly what time their bid got here because it did not arrive at the school board office. It actually arrived at the vocational center, but we did look at it. The recommendation is to go with Lead Propane. It's a price less than it was last year. Ms. Belcher, can you tell me how many cents it was?
Thirty cents less.
Thirty cents less per gallon. The other bid had a fluctuating price. It was so many cents above what they get it for, which means that price will go up and down all year, and that's not the easiest thing to budget for. Since we've got a decrease in the price, we're asking that we stay with Lead Propane, who we've had a good working relationship with.
Did Southwest, did they?
They did not bid.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure because I know Lead Propane now is not actually local.
Correct. It's a subsidiary of Ferrell Gas.
Yes.
I mean, if you looked at the prices right now, Suburban would be a little bit less today, but as winter comes and the price goes up, they could, I suspect that the price will go above Lead Propane and we're just asking that we go with Lead Propane that we've had a working relationship with and we have fixed price.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll say it.
All right, second, second. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E, action, if any to award a contract related to IFB number 25-1003, Milk Juice and Dairy Products to Borden Dairy.
Madam Chair, we only had one bid from Borden Dairy. That's the current provider and we're asking that we award a contract to Borden Dairy to provide us our milk, juice and dairy products for Kefter.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll say it.
All right, second.
I'll say it.
All right, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, action, if any to award a contract related to IFB number 25-1004, Copy Paper to Contract Paper Group.
Madam Chair, we had five bids on a truckload of copy paper. Contract Paper Group was the cheapest bid and that's who we went with last year and we had success with their paper and the copy. We're asking that we can award them a contract for a truckload of copy paper, Contract Paper Group. It's at $29.59 per case.
I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Correct.
Second, Eric. Okay, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G, action, if any to approve 2024, 2025 revised budget.
Madam Chair, this is the revised budget after the General Assembly got back together and approved a budget at the state level. The total for the budget for next year is $69,50,071.85. That's an increase of almost $8.2 million from this year. We appreciate Ms. Belcher and all the hard work she did on the budget, but we're asking that we approve this and we can get the final document to the board of supervisors and Mr. Poe. They already have received a draft copy of this, but until you all approve it, it's not finalized.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Second. All right, I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. H, action, if any to approve 2024, 2025 salary scales.
Madam Chair, you all have a copy of the proposed salary scales. This is an increase on every step and every scale from this year. If anyone, for one reason or another, is not on a step or a scale, we're proposing a 2% increase for those individuals. We have a few that are off the scale for one reason or another. It could be, an example could be, they were at the top of the scale a few years ago and we've given a percentage increase. And if they're not on this scale, they'd be at 2%, but everyone on every step would receive an increase. And that's what, you know, the state provided us the money and we're asking that we can give our people a pay raise and stay competitive with divisions across the region. We're at a little bit of a disadvantage here because we also compete against Kentucky and Tennessee. I think one of the proposals in Tennessee is that starting teachers begin at $50,000. That's, you know, we've got to be able to compete with that or we're going to have people running, you know, the Clayburn County or Hancock County. But I think these are skills that we can physically handle and it gives everyone a bump in pay.
Everybody, everybody gets a bump in pay.
Everyone in the division will receive an increase in pay.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
All right, second.
I'll say it.
I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I, action, if any to approve 2023, 2024 revised budget.
This is the one I mentioned earlier. The calculation tool came out today, so again, I want to thank Ms. Belcher because we just got this after lunch today. We had anticipated, and I have mentioned this at every board meeting I think we have had this school year, that our enrollment is up. And I have given Mr. Poe and the board supervisors, call it a warning that, you know, our enrollment's up and we may be asking for more money. So with the revised budget, it goes up about $175,000 and change. And I would ask that you all approve this revised budget for this school year and I will go into the board of supervisors meeting along with Ms. Belcher. She'll go with me again to the board supervisor meeting. It's coming Tuesday to ask for $175,000 for this school year to meet the required local effort and required local match for the programs that we participated in.
I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Got it.
Second. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck. I'm going to let Ms. Belcher do the talking this time.
J, action, if any to approve a monthly insurance contribution for Head Start employees for fiscal year 25.
Madam Chair, we met with Madison Cook and Ms. Baker from Head Start. The issue is, Head Start's fiscal year is a different time period than ours and they have their budget in place. With the increase that we did on the health insurance, it's putting them at a bad spot because we've increased the employer amount and they do not have that factored into their budget. So what we came up with was to see if the school board would make the half of the employer contribution for the Head Start employees and the other half would come out of the Head Start grant and that would be a, you know, a contribution or that we would make to help the Head Start program. And they said they would look at their budget when they do a new one to see what they can come up with, but we want to make sure that we keep our head start.
So this is just temporary?
We've got it for this school. We put it in our budget for this school year, but if they will, they're going to look at it and see if they can, what they can do. I'd like to go ahead and approve it for this school year, so we have it planned and they know and they can plan ahead of time. But it would just be half of the employer's portion for each employee at Head Start for this school year.
And next year will revise it?
Next year, we have asked Ms. Baker and Ms. Cook to, you know, see what they can do, but, you know, I think Head Start's a wonderful program and we, if we can help them, they help us with the students, so I'm asking that we do this.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll say it. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, action, if any to approve two additional electric buses from EPA Clean School Bus Program Awards.
Madam Chair, we received notice that we have been approved for two more electric buses. Those have to be approved by the school board. Like I said, we've had real good luck getting one school bus. The other one we have had in the shop. These are at no cost to the school division. The only thing that we have to do is take a diesel bus and take it out of service and make it inoperable, take the place of the, or the electric buses take the place of. By inoperable, you can do a number of things. You can cut a hole in the block of the engine. You can cut the frame. You have to make it beyond use.
So we have to take two buses out of it?
We have to take two buses, but what we have been doing is taking the buses that are at the end of their life, that we know we're going to have to replace in the next year or two anyway. So you're not really losing something that you're going to be.
We're losing to the bus engine.
Buses? Could you use a couple of the buses that we don't have on our current route that we have as backups?
I think they have to be a bus that's in use that you are replacing. So you can't take one you've parked for three years and use it. You're taking one that's already, and what we do is we look at the fleet when we say, hey, this bus is at the end of its life within a year and do that.
Are these, are these the two buses we talked about in previous meetings about applying for?
We, yeah.
So we only have two, right?
Currently, we have two on premises.
Will that be six instead of?
No, this is the two we applied for and we didn't get approved.
Okay.
The other thing that I want to make sure you all are aware of, the previous two buses, we had no money in. We paid nothing for them and we actually got money for the charging station. There may be a cost of additional charging stations unless Ms. Belcher comes up creatively, come up with, you know, we asked the solar people last year and they wrote us a check and we got the charging station at no cost, but if there's a cost, it would probably be about $25,000 for a charging station. But we will definitely ask some of the people who have said, you know, if you need anything, come and talk to us. And the, we would have to think about where to put the charging stations. We've talked about the possibility of putting them at a different location. There's just some caveats to that because you've got a lot of, you've got to make sure that you've got a charging station that people just can't come and plug their car into and charge it. And, you know, we also have things that you want to make sure that they're safe for children. I would probably say we need to put charging stations at the bus shop. We keep an eye on them. We have cameras on them and we have several people who pick up their buses in the morning.
They might be the first thing I agree with, like fossil fuel.
I'm not saying I don't like fossil fuel, Mr. Heinz.
It just realizes it's gone.
Don't put that on record.
I still think a lot of our electricity comes from coal-powered electric plants, so keep that in mind as well. That might be how we're charging these electric buses. But we do have to have board permission before we can move forward with this. We talked to the bus shop. They've had some angst with the electric buses, but they are sending the mechanics to a couple of classes so we can make sure everybody's aware and how to handle these electric buses because they are completely different than, you know, what we've been used to. The kids I've talked to said they love them because they're extremely quiet, turn the radio on, they can hear it without hearing anything, and the heat is instantaneous as soon as, like all of us remember when you cranked up a bus years ago. Like we have two bus drivers here, but it took a little while to get those heat, not on these. Soon as you, soon as you turn the key, you've got heat on these, but.
And then hot weather, it'd burn you up, heat up that engine.
So. We need board permission to move forward.
You want me to make the motion? I'll make the motion. I'll go, have a second. All right, thank you. I'll in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last one, action, if any to issue requests for proposals for roof replacements at Lee County Public Schools during the 2024, 2025 school year.
Madam Chair, we worded this this way. We have some areas at different locations that we need to look at. Examples are the newest part at Rose Hill, the roof has not been touched, it's past warranty and it's something we need to probably inspect and look at. The newest part at El Lob is the same way. The gym at Thomas Walker is another one we need to look at. The Ag Building at Flatwoods, I think the cottage at Flatwoods needs to be looked at. Those are roofs that have not been touched. So I think cafeteria at St. Charles might need to be looked at. And what we're asking is if we go around and we look at these and we figure out which one is in the worst shape, that we can issue requests for proposals. And if we have the funds this coming school year to look at continuing to do what we've been doing in the past of improving our facilities.
Motion.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, closed session. Mr. Heinz, would you please read the code?
Moving on to closed session, first to discuss personnel in the code of Virginia 2.2-371181 to discuss early kindergarten mission in the code of Virginia 2.2-371182. Discuss an acquisition of a parcel of land in the code of Virginia 2.1-344A subsection 3.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Have the motion.
Second.
Okay, second. I'm sorry. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.